Four, five, six.
Seven.
Eight. Eight, right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, nor please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willens.
Here.
Chairman Iraque.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Start off with the pledge of allegiance. At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none in the scene. We have correspondence from Mr. Garofalo. The application 2255 has been withdrawn. Do we need to do anything?
No. 2255, we'll do a resolution with the withdrawal.
Okay.
So if you can make a motion accepting and withdrawing the application.
Motion to move.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, takes care of that. We got resolutions.
There's one other letter. You should have.
One more letter, I'm sorry. Brady and, yeah. Jihad. Right, notified my client as everybody withdrawing the application, please verify the accounting. What was this? What?
Mr. Chairman, there was a car trailer that was parked in the front off Park Road.
Yep.
There was a fire hydrant in the middle, they put a crushed stone down and would keep this car trailer there.
This was an old.
Yeah, he was gonna move it back.
It's been around forever.
Yeah, this has been.
Okay, do remember this, okay.
And if we do do a resolution, we have to send it back to enforcement.
Okay. Resolution to that effect?
Second, Josh.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That takes care of that. And that, okay, so the first one, first resolution is Edwards Holding, Berkowitz, Kaplan, no, Kaplan's still gonna lie, Mazzarella, Reddy, Snyder, Willens, Iraque. Somebody move that one?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Iraque.
Yes. 2251 and 2250. Jaskiewicz, Kaplan, Mazzarella, Reddy, William, Willens.
So move Jaskiewicz, second, Reddy.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Iraque.
Yes. 2254, 2261, 2267, and 2272.
I move accept the resolutions.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yep.
Willens.
Yes.
Iraque.
Now, there was a request to carry a case?
He, um, no, not on, he didn't notice. Is that North Beverwick? Yes, I had to give him notice.
Has that been a recent phenomenon that seems to be increasing that more and more people are not noticing or noticing incorrectly? And can we do anything about it that we're, we have these cases lined up and we end up with one case of the night and people are waiting months for it to be heard?
Yeah, right. Wanna run a seminar on how to do some paperwork?
No, thank you.
Nora and I were talking, Mr. Chairman, before, maybe in the application packet, maybe we can put additional things like having pictures and requiring it that before, you know, before we schedule them, it has to be deemed complete.
But we've had people not notice, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you give them a form of notice?
Yes, I give them, I explain it. And then when I schedule them, I do their notice and I do a cover letter telling them what they have to do.
That's not all you can do. What do you have to do?
The other, just another logistic thing, Mr. Chairman, too. It's seeming that we get an increasing number of people that appear here that haven't seen the engineering's report or other letters that we have up here and they haven't received them.
What's the procedure, Nora? Why are these people not, are they not paying a lot?
Engineering is not in any way being timely with sending their letters. So I've told them, they have to send them because they should have it to me, like, when I first get an application, that's when they receive a copy of the application. And then Jen does her review and then they get a copy of their review. And it could be a month and a half later before they're heard and I'm getting their letter a week before, a day before.
Yeah.
So.
I kinda noticed that.
Am I correct in regards to this address that they just recently moved it at this location within the last year, year and a half?
You're talking, yes.
285 North Beverwick.
That's correct. And there's, they, they, code enforcement actually went over there when they first moved in and said, hey, look, there's been issues. If you're doing anything, please come to town.
This is Irving Warren's old house?
This is.
The accountant?
Yes, on the corner.
Not on the corner, no.
No, 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 no. This is the corner where the, there was a doctor's, there was a doctor and then it would.
Then another family.
House fell in such disrepair that there have been a few purchases, which each purchase, they did, done some type of improvement. The last owner, it's right across the street from the blue white house that's a rental on Vale, that faces Vale. This is the east side of North Beverwick, northbound side, like heading north on the right-hand side. I'm sorry, Nora, I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. Just that they claim, even though they were told they have to come for permits for anything they do, they are saying their contractor said they didn't need permits.
They went nuts on that house in regards to their repair, their repairs and renovations. I'm so shocked that they.
It's not pretty old.
When were they noticed?
Uh, I'd have to.
Oh, okay.
I'd have to go back and.
Yeah, 'cause they, they revamped the whole thing.
Is it positive?
And we're just hearing this now, huh?
Positively?
This is, this is on the, the southeast corner of Beverwick and Vale?
Correct.
It's across the street from you.
Yeah, but at the Vale Light.
At the Vale Light. That lit, that house was Doctor somebody.
It was, it was, yeah, frequently.
More than one doctor was in that building. And what, what is the, what is the issue about?
Oh, they did loads of renovations.
Legalized the patio, driveway expansion, and above-ground swimming pool.
And they also have a fence.
What was her name?
All right. Well.
Somebody else.
I, you know, what, what gall three is, we get these requests to legalize and then people drag their feet.
Yeah.
And I would say that tell them the next meeting, have they been to a meeting yet?
No.
They have not been to one?
No.
All right, never mind.
And again, these are.
What was her last name? I apologize.
Rana, R-A-N-A?
But I have to tell you, if they purch, if, if Rana purchased it within the last year, year and a half, these renovations predated.
Oh, yeah.
That, that closing.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely. That, that property was fixed up dramatically by the last, the. Okay, so we're down to one case? That's it, Nora?
Down to one case.
Okay, application 2145 Patel, 107 Harrison Road, please come forward.
Are you both gonna provide testimony or only one person? Okay, you both raise your right hand, hands. Do you swear affirm testimony you're about to give before the boards choose who you've got? And for the record, your son, Patel? And so can, and your name, ma'am?
Patel.
How do you spell that?
T.
Thank you. You're sworn, have a seat, please speak into the microphone, Mr. Chairman, the witnesses are sworn.
Okay, you're seeking to see variants to legalize the shed and patio and to install patio expansion, shed and rear yard, so.
If you remember, Mr. Chairman, I think this is the third time that the applicant is here.
Way more times.
Way more than that.
They were supposed to bring an updated drawing, which has been provided.
Okay.
And I think Nora might have received a letter from Township Engineer Paul.
Yes, there's a letter from him.
And he had visited my property and then he, like, he wrote everything inside whatever he saw.
You, you agree with everything in the letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he.
Yes, positive.
I, I know, that's what I'm saying.
The, the new survey does not show any proposed patio expansion. So is it all there now?
Yeah, it's all there now.
There won't be anything beyond what the new survey shows?
Nothing. Whatever's on the new survey.
Did you install patio in the process of this application?
No, I think it was done.
It was all, everything was there?
It was, was done before.
Did you do any of the patio or did you buy, buy the sum that way? Did you install the patio?
I had it, I had it done by.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All of it or just some of it?
Some of it, not all of it. It was halfway through.
So the engineer.
Yes.
Saw the project.
Yeah.
In its completed state. Yes?
Yes. Completed state. And also he stated that there was a problem with ponding water, like, you know, drainage issue. He couldn't find.
I read it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And he states that your property is lower than your neighbor's?
Yes, exactly.
I just wanna confirm.
No, no, I have the letter too. Sure.
So he's saying there's no visible ponding even after heavy rains?
Yeah. He visited like two times. When there was a heavy rain, he showed up also on that day.
I don't have the original file. Can someone tell me what the original requests were?
It's coverage.
Just impervious coverage, that's it?
John, you have.
Oh, there were a bunch of setbacks.
Yeah. Oh, it's right there.
No, I don't.
With the stuff I gave you.
See, the, the, that doesn't have the zoning report.
Have you had any conversations with your neighbors about this?
I think someone's here.
Yeah.
Back there.
Okay, all right. That doesn't look good, okay.
The zoning is on the map anyway.
All right.
Experience tell you that, right?
So the impervious coverage is only two and a half percent over the allowed amount. That's not so bad. The accessory yard, the patio is zero feet, side yard, zero feet. Yards and courts, six is allowed, three is proposed, and yards and court, side yard, three, three is existing and proposed and allowed, six. Is there any way that you could back off some of that patio that goes right up to your property line? How many feet? I'm looking at the survey, but unfortunately I don't have a scale. How wide along, I believe it's the side of your house, how?
Eight, eight to 10.
Oh, okay, so it's.
Eight to 10 feet. Almost 11.
So could you cut that down a couple of feet?
No.
No?
Why not?
Why not?
Well, it's been done. I don't know, I mean, I tried.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
I don't have a problem.
All right, so regardless of whether it's done or not.
'Cause like I said, the impervious coverage itself is not dramatic, but it's the side, the setbacks that are a little encroaching.
Where is the? That patio running along the side of your house is not interlocking, it's in rows, correct? Based on the picture you provided?
Are they typical patio blocks?
Typical patio blocks about this big?
That are just set in a, in a.
They're grounded?
Did you get that picture?
I mean, you could, you could take a row or two off.
Okay.
The fence.
Okay.
And that would probably get your coverage down.
Okay.
To the point.
Okay.
Because you're not peeling them out in between, it'll be a straight line.
There's a fence there?
Yeah.
There's a chain fence.
Your fence or your neighbor's fence?
I think it's my neighbor's that got it.
Maybe I have the wrong, maybe I have the wrong picture. What I'm looking at shows a white vinyl fence.
Yeah, that's mine.
And beyond that is a chain. There's one that shows both.
Yeah, beyond that, there's a chain.
Okay.
So if you just took a row, two rows of those, those tile out of there, you'd have a little grass.
Vinyl fence?
Along the whole side.
From the fence.
Vinyl and chain.
Vinyl and chain.
The whole side.
Okay.
From, yeah, and that would, that would probably, I mean, what, the picture I'm looking at, I knew there's gonna be another row starting someplace because the one end of the patio is eight foot eight inch, or 0.8 feet, the other one's almost 11 feet. So it's, it widens out here, you go back, right? Toward the shed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I would do is remove that row. Plant some grass seed. All you have to do is weed whack it once in a while. But if you, you just leave it as mud and dirt and all that, it's gonna start to erode under the fence.
Okay. But the way you do is take two full rows out and take those cut pieces and just move them over.
Okay.
How many feet would that be, John?
It looks, it looks like he's got 108 feet on that, that wall and that patio section is at least 50 feet long. So if he takes out two rows.
It's about a foot and a half?
They look like to be almost foot square.
Yeah, it looks like a foot each.
So about two foot.
So you would have 100 square feet of, 100 square feet of less coverage, which would drop your impervious down by.
I'm looking to see what size the lot is.
It would drop it below 40%. It's just over 6,000.
Just over 6,000?
Yeah, it's 6,000. It's in here.
That's a percent and a half to, you'd be right on the 40%.
Yeah.
So then we're just, you know, we're mitigating the side, we're mitigating the impervious coverage.
Right. Whose fence is it? The vinyl fence? Yours or the neighbor's?
Why does he have a problem with the rear? I don't see the rear being.
Up against the neighbor's house.
Straight up against the front.
Oh, that's the rear?
Yeah.
Oh. I thought this was the front and this was the rear.
The fencing on.
He has really.
This looks, oh.
Every yard looks like this.
Before, before the fencing, I took the permit from the county.
That's the rear yard.
And did you put the fence where it's supposed to go?
Yeah.
25 feet, and so this part is rear yard.
If you look, if you look at by the sheds, all the, all the blocks you see, those are removable. By the shed, those are removable. I can remove that. That's not a concern.
You, you're talking about the ones under the shed or right next to the shed?
No, no, right, right next to the shed, I can remove those, those are removable.
Yeah, it looks like there's what, two, two rows of them there?
Yeah, I can remove those, those are easy to remove.
So you will remove two rows of the sheds along that side of the house, the westfully side of the house?
Okay.
You just said also you are going to remove the tiles next to the shed?
Yeah.
Where's the door in the shed? Does it come out onto the patio or does it come onto the grass?
It comes out of the grass.
Okay.
That's where the door is.
I was just trying to.
It looks like there's a row of, of the brick in front of the door of the shed?
Yeah, that's removable too. I just put it up there just to make a level, like, if I wanted to remove some kind of machinery or something, I can remove that. That's fine.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness, these witnesses on the testimony given today? Please come forward.
And sir, this is just for questions. You'll have the time to make a statement against or for the application.
This is just for questions, if you have question. No, 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 you gotta come up and identify yourself and have the microphone. We're very formal here.
Just for the record, can you state your name?
David Murray.
Take the microphone.
Take one of the microphones.
Your residence, unfortunately.
They're, they're removable.
Yeah, they come out.
Or sit down, either way.
David Murray.
And residence, address, please.
Is 109 Harrison Road.
Thank you.
I also previously owned the home that they live in now, 107, which I did sold. I do have surveys.
It's just questions, sir, it's just questions.
Questions, questions? What kind of questions you got?
So basically, the patio is, how are you gonna control the water? Not only were you rerouting the water out of the house from the gutters and everything pitches to a drain that is higher than my property, where you paid a contractor seven different times to add to a patio and I still continue to flood and have water.
What's the question?
I need the water controlled.
Well, according to the engineer, if I'm reading this correctly, am I reading this correctly, gentlemen, ladies? Your township engineer says.
Okay.
It's not his fault.
I would like to show you the engineer print that they have, because, one, underneath the shed, there's a concrete pad.
In, in the next part, you can do all that.
You can, you can get sworn in and testify as much as you want.
I would like to know how you're gonna control the water from coming into my basement and it's ruining cabinetry, flooring on certain occasions. It's not 100%.
So the question is, is how are you gonna control water from running onto this property?
Basically, it's not going, it's not going to his property, as is mentioned on the letter that is one feet above my property. So how is that possible the water is going through his basement?
Yeah.
You'll have that chance.
You'll have that chance. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Let me finish, let's see if he has any more questions.
I came to you.
Question.
Question?
Question.
Questions.
I requested it to be mitigated. You've refused.
What's the question? What is the question?
How are they going to resolve the water issue?
There is, according to the town engineer, there's not a water issue.
Well, he's not blaming, he's not blaming them for any water that you might get, and he is stating, the engineer, we can only go off what the engineer is saying. He is saying that when he was there, after two heavy rains, there was no water. So for us, we're based, we have to base it off of.
All right, let's, do you have any other questions? Any other question?
I need the water that is coming from your property.
Please stop with the water coming from his property. Do you have any other questions about the testimony that they gave this evening? Do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I do not.
All right, have a seat. We'll call you back when the time comes. Nancy, I'm sorry, do you have a question for him?
Yeah, I have a question. Did you sell this property to this, this applicant?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. What, what year was that?
2015.
I'll take, I'll ask him, not you. Go ahead, I'm sorry, sir?
2015.
Thank you.
Board has no more questions. There's one other member of, any, no, you're not interested in answering questions, okay. So is there anything else that you wanna add at this point? No, okay. So now I'm gonna ask, is there any member of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? This is your opportunity.
Sir, you have to be, come to the microphone, you have to be sworn in, so raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm testimony you're about to give before the boards choose who you've got?
Yes, I do.
And again, you're David Murray, 109, was it Harrison?
Harrison Road.
Thank you, you're sworn.
100% correct.
You can have a seat, please speak into the microphone.
Um, I, I did need the township engineer in property. We were a little bit perplexed, not only that the engineer who provided the print showing that there's a four-inch pipe, there's a three-inch outlet. It's a three-inch scheduled 40 pipe. It's not four-inch. There also doesn't show in the survey any concrete that is underneath the shed. While I was constructing a new construction home next door, not only from the basis where we excavated, George Winters was there, Sal from the township engineering, I excavated, we put in a foundation. Through the course of this, after I sold the home, I could show you my prints from 2010, 2014, where we not only changed the home and the property layout, because there is an issue with water on the, on that entire block. There is a catch basin in the back where we originally planned for the entry to come in the back of Grantwood. Okay? They face the Allentown, we were gonna come into the back. But there is a drain that was put in there, not only at my expense, but also the township's, and they desired for the home to be built opposite, that it would face Harrison Road, to keep the drainage flowing to the back for all of the lots on that area. There are five homes on basically that circle. When I started to dig, put in the foundation, there was multiple times that they have hired a contractor to come in. One, they're not legitimate. Two, there's no zoning applications or approvals. They've also been denied a couple of times when they applied for things. I did come to them. I explained to them that we are flooding. You diverted your water right into my foundation and windows. The water in the property, even what was surveyed and what was done by Fred Miola, prior to me selling to my neighbor, prior to my construction, everything was clear-cut and dry where the water ran. After I finished my construction, even had my final survey done, we could clearly see that there is a gap and a void even on their surveyor's Sunland survey. So there are three deficiencies that I see on the survey. One, there's no concrete pad shown underneath the shed. I witnessed it. I saw it. It spars the four-inch pipe. It's a three-inch schedule 40 pipe that exits the road. On a calm day that's nice and warm out, there's no frost. Come into winter, where their exit pipe is, where I think it was the fourth time and fifth time that they had work done, finally after the sixth, after I flooded, the third time in my basement after being finished, they put in a drain system. This drain system exits above the curb. Okay? So it comes out, they knocked out a block. Okay? Which you're not supposed to do. They exit the pipe there. During the course of the winter, we all know we have snow. What occurs? The snow lays there. Not only did they exacerbate the existing situation by constructing four times and adding to a patio, forget about the concrete pad. The patio's four times. I had to go in and mitigate. You name it. We'll get to that point. However, you don't see running water when it's warm, because off of the gutters, the bulk of it is able to flow out the road. When water is warm, great. When it's cold and you have snow on the road and that water comes down and hits that, it freezes. If you have snow on the road covering a pipe, not only does water lay in that lower section, okay, and freezes during the winter, it freezes and does not allow the water to go. So if you have a home, let's say 26 by, what is that, 46? All of that water, when I owned the home, it went off all four corners. They have since put up new gutters, new drain systems, where I had asked, I'd explained, George Winters, township engineer, has went and spoke to their father. They continue to build and continue to exacerbate the situation. So all this water that comes off of the house, it all comes out that three-foot pipe. When it's frozen during the winter, it can't go anywhere. Where do you think this water goes? What they built here and what I could show you, we can go over the engineering numbers. I went over it with the engineer and showed him. Even on their own survey, it shows a pond. That pond sits, I have three windows, I have a 10-foot basement below grade. It comes right in. I have attempted to mitigate the situation seven times. Not once, not twice, not seven times. They've expanded the patio four. Get about the concrete. Then they continue to add and want to add more. I'm not taking the water. And I'll be honest with you. I'm a mason by trade. I have degrees in landscape architecture, mechanical engineering. I work not only in this township, I lived in this township my entire life. Okay? I worked for multiple builders. I could read these numbers. Okay? I build houses from the excavation, when there's nothing there, to finish. I could do woodwork now. Okay? You cannot tell me that water is not coming into my house. It's not coming from the floor. It's coming through a window. Okay? From the grade, from what my neighbor had constructed by contractors, it did faulty work. That wasn't approved. That's not my fault. Okay? However, my insurance company, I'm faced with a $1,000 deductible. I came to them several times. I explained the situation. I paid my labors, myself, to mitigate this seven different times. Not only, okay, I have a full basement, I have a full foundation perimeter. The township, which obviously they do things properly under construction, they make you control water. I diverted every single ounce of water on my property to the existing drains in the back. Water can't be coming from my property. It's not coming up from the ground because I have full subpumps. I have full drain systems. Okay? It's coming through a window. It's coming through my windows. So what I had to do, imagine this course, seven times, get about topsoil or seed. If you have a basement that's 10-foot deep after you've finished construction, and then you have your neighbor, when you explain to them there's a problem, then they want to keep going, keep building. They don't care about you. There was never a nice word. I came, I physically redubbed, regraded everything out to fix it the first time. My course. What did they show me? Respect? I came back, they dug all their garbage, all their debris to put in their patios and build in the swell that we have. Engineering prints don't lie. And maybe I don't have an engineering degree, but I can tell you what, the numbers don't lie, grades don't lie. And I could tell you what's on some of my prints don't match these new prints. And I questioned that. And I questioned the engineer.
Do you have evidence to present to us?
I would love to show you some of these things. Yes.
All right. You have to understand that we mark them and then we keep them.
Uh, are you able to make a copy?
Yeah.
Is someone able to make a copy? Obviously, you have this. We're going to go off of theirs. You should have this.
Yeah, we have.
If you...
We have that.
We have that.
Okay. We could go off of their... What's that?
What do you have in your hand?
Basically, my existing applications showing what was existing on the home. There were concrete patios. There were no beds.
Oh, that's history. Let's use this one.
That's fine.
Okay, you said you can do that.
That's fine. What I had to do to mitigate before, I would like to explain...
Let's go from what's there shown on this survey, and you're going to tell us it's either right or wrong.
Okay. One, there's no concrete patio underneath the shed. There's no mention of that.
In terms of coverage, makes no difference.
Makes no difference. Already got a shed there.
Roof got paved. Doesn't make any difference.
That would only come to play as if it was building coverage.
It's funny because I do, you know, get zoning permits and we have to do jobs.
Right.
Number one, you're not allowed, it's a six-foot setback.
Well, that's a different issue.
That is a separate issue.
And then the other thing is, depending on the size of it, and then if we're going to put in a permanent structure such as concrete, one, it's not permeable. Two, it's a structure.
Right.
This is concrete.
Right. But a roof is a structure and it's not permeable either. So from zoning standpoint, whether it's a roof, whether it's concrete, whether it's plastic, it's all impermeable.
I know whenever we do a job, we have to see zoning permits and everything else.
We're not going to win that one.
You can decide what you want to do.
The issue of setback is the issue. The issue of coverage is an issue, but he says he's going to pull up the...
So am I able to build a concrete structure to a property line where there's a setback?
No. You've got to get a variance to do it.
Okay.
That's my daddy.
That's what he's here for.
All right. So we'll get...
But that isn't what you've been talking about. You've been talking about the drainage.
My issue is the water.
Yeah.
Get the water off of my property.
Now, you do know that he's going to pull up enough of the patio. So he's probably going to be compliant on the coverage.
One I'm requesting, please take, you know...
But I want you to go back to the survey.
Okay.
There's something you're saying that's wrong.
Okay. If we take a look at the top of the grade where the water's going to get into, do we see the number 100.7 on that?
Where it says yard drain?
172?
Correct.
100.72?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
And then go to one, go through the X on my property, below that, the third one down, GS 100.25.
Okay.
So all the water is ponding to that point. If we take a look at some of the other higher marks in front of their home, the GS...
Right next to that, it's showing top of concrete, which is on your property, correct?
That's a concrete top walkway. That's not the grade.
And that's two feet above, almost two feet above that where you say ponding takes place?
Actually, the concrete walkway is to the front. The ponding is to the back.
Okay. Now, let's go back where we have a 100.68, correct?
Correct.
And right across from that on your property is 100.92.
That's where we had to fill in after they finished putting in the shed, because they're blocking the water flow.
But is that right? I mean, you're a little higher than he is.
There was window wells. I'll explain the construction. There was a grade cut. There are window wells to have sun coming in. Okay? We have existing grades that, you know, were shot previously onto the property. I had to raise my window wells twice to their construction. I had to raise the topsoil four times. Okay?
Okay.
So the original, if you take my original survey...
So is the engineer right, the basic soil, go out there, stand there, your yard is a little higher than his?
Yeah.
The property was basically flat before construction.
That's what I'm asking. What's there today?
What is there today is still the same hard clay-packed dirt that was existing. I only sloped topsoil this way. The situation is, is when the water ponds, it doesn't get through that to the sandy loam in likely Parsippany. So it lays on top of the clay. Since there's topsoil, it can't shed it. The water comes in and comes into my windows that way. And the water comes basically, and the biggest problem after they put in the pipe system, when it's, let's say, not freezing out, no snow on the road, that's great. The problem that we're having now is when there's snow that lays on the ground, okay? It's a cloud in and past that pipe. Water hits snow, it freezes. We all know that. I shot it with my transit. I helped the one Spanish guy that they had putting it in. There is barely a quarter inch to a half an inch pipe on this entire run. It lays flat.
You mean pitch?
Correct. It lays flat. They started off with a four-inch pipe. They had to go to a three-inch, a solid. The water lays in. When there is snow, it freezes. When the melt comes off the house and the storms you have, it's not just snow. It goes to snow and rain. Where does all this water go?
Where?
And what happens is, it comes down the house, their drain is higher, it plugs up there. They built up the back of the house with a patio, so it's a moat, before the township had me run into the back of the drain, which is the proper way to do it. They blocked that with the moat with the shed and concrete. And basically, I have a ponding area.
Are we talking about surface runoff or groundwater?
Surface. It's not groundwater.
All right.
Groundwater, I have a full subpump system, and it's not, you know, it's basically, you know, a fat wall. It's not masonry. Half of the house is masonry, the rest is the, you know, the structured forms.
Did you talk to the town engineer at all?
He came to show me we were perplexed about this. And what we said, if somebody could get in trouble.
Well, we're perplexed over the fact that he's gotten a relatively favorable report, despite the fact that you attest to, the fact that the engineer's office knows that there's a deep history in regards to this property relative to the new owner.
You're only flooding, I'm guessing, basically, Saturday, winter time.
The water, it's not coming this way from the ground. It's not ground table water.
You don't flood winter, spring, or fall?
It's during the winter.
Sorry, summer, spring, or fall. You don't flood.
On a 10-inch storm, some of those, yes, I get water. It doesn't flood. The house is not flooding.
The window wells?
The window wells were flooding, yes.
Okay.
And even now, to date, what is still occurring is with the winter, the pipes backed up, where the water comes so fast, it lays, it gets clogged, and even the height, the height of the drain, where it is, the water's laying here and coming into my last window.
And you seem to be pretty knowledgeable. I have a question. When he went out on October 3rd, which he chose because it was the remnants of a hurricane, there was no water in the window wells?
There was barely an inch. That's something we talked about. There was barely an inch of rain.
Can you tell us why?
The situation is on, during the winter months, when the plant freezes...
So we're back to this only happens in the winter. That's what I'm trying to narrow this down.
No. When there is heavy-duty rain.
So that hurricane, which I remember, was not heavy-duty. It's got to be more than a hurricane to flood your windows.
Some hurricanes don't bring 10 inches of rain.
So it's only 10 inches?
It could be less than that, but a one-inch storm like we have now, it's not going to come in the window. Unless you have, like I said, the snowpack.
So on that, and I don't mean to interrupt, but in the bottom of the letter, in the last paragraph, when he says also window wells need proper drainage to assure that the wells don't fill with water, he's talking about your window wells.
We had, we'll address this because I have a part of my...
Wait, just answer, please just answer his question. That's a yes or no question.
I installed window well drains. I hand-dug 10-foot deep. There are full drains that tie into the house French drain. What occurs is during the winter, you get snow, things pack. When it comes, it snows. Everything like freezes over.
But you told...
The drains...
It's a yes or no question.
Right, because we're being, you seem very convincing, and you seem like you're telling your story honestly and whatever. But we are also faced with a engineer's report that is not backing up what you're saying. We're, and if you had a conversation with him and you expressed your concerns with him, how come he didn't express those concerns in this letter, which is what we're going to be basing probably our opinion on?
Especially given your testimony where you say at one point that the township engineer almost act like a liaison between you and the current owner. So if the township engineer's office knew that there was such a rich history of problems here, why the favorable report?
It was George Winters. George Winters doesn't work in engineering anymore.
This is not George Winters. This is not George Winters. Please, please, please.
Paul and Brandon.
This is Paul.
You started to say you had a solution to this. What is it?
I was suggesting, and the only way to fix this problem is that drain that they have, they need to put a drain in where it's low on the property. It's not only on my side, it's on their side, in the one area where it shows the 10.25.
Is there storm drain in the street?
I put in even...
Is there storm drain in the street?
They have them, yes. There's two of them.
Two what?
There's two storm drains. And the way that the water should have ran, it should have ran...
There's grates on the side of the road, you said?
Yes, there are.
And where are they? They don't show up on this survey.
There are two storm drains, one to the bulk to the left of the home.
There's actually a...
They actually don't show the curb in the engineering update.
Is there actually a drain, like a grate in the backyard as well? Because the one picture looks like there's a, picture we have looks like there's a grate in the yard itself that's above the...
Correct.
Above the ground.
And that does not take anything because it's higher.
Because it's higher. That was my question.
It's farther back to the house. It's higher. And my property and his is lower here. So the drain is useless.
You don't have any pictures. You didn't think to take any pictures of the problems?
I can't go out on properties.
No, your property. Pictures of the problems on your property. You don't have any pictures.
Actually, engineering reports is contradictory to what you are saying, because engineering report says that your property is above than their.
Well, then if, just take a look at the numbers. The numbers can't lie. If the back where the drain is, if it's higher, then we're showing the X. Obviously, there's a pitch this way. And the only remedy I had, because I was six-foot, was to take topsoil. And I put in window wells, more stone. I even tied a drain in. I dug down 10 feet, tied into the foundation drain underneath the slab of the house. The problem is, is when you've got snow and drain, with my class, I take his water, where it comes in so quick. It's like a flash flood. It's not like you're going to come back a day later and there's going to be puddling water.
So what? You know, in all you've said tonight, you have about 5% of what you said was testimony, and the other 95% was just a repeat of the first 5%, in my opinion. Okay? So you still cannot counter the township engineer's report?
If we could take a look at it, if the drain, okay, the drain in the yard, okay?
Where is the drain? Can you tell me?
100.7, right?
Correct. The drain top is 100.7. Okay?
It says yard drain grate 100.7.
So it's by that.
Correct.
But in the picture, it shows higher than what is around it, and on the survey, it says the ground is higher. It says 100.81 below that, but looking at this picture that we have, it looks, it doesn't look that way.
So you say if they lower that drain, how...
They need to lower that drain and the grate to take the water on this backside. I mean, if somebody wants to take a look, I could show it to you on the map and show you what I'm talking about. But it clearly, if the drain top is 100.7, and the X on my property next to two window wells is 100.25, obviously, it's, my property is lower than theirs, and they continue to raise it. And I have the old, you know, heights that were from, you know, my original application, because I own the home. I had the, and the heights were lower.
We know the grades have been changed, and the old heights don't mean anything. I tried to get that across.
Well, what I'm asking is, is please put in a drain that's lower than my property, so I don't have to continue to put money in. I'm already at a loss with my cabinets because I have water coming in through a window. It's not coming up through the ground.
Do you want a drain? Or do you want a swell?
I requested that some sort of French drain, that whether it's snow, whatever may be it, something that is open, not a little box drain, and where all their water from their house comes into that box drain before it gets diverted. That's what I'm trying to say. So they're filling up a box drain where I'm lower? Where do you think the water mitigates?
The problem with all this is that the engineer, who is, we deal with these water coverage issues all the time, and they're very specific. He isn't mentioning this at all.
I would really like...
Right. So, right, and we're all baffled by this, you know, with this conflicting information. But the bottom line is, this is the cost of doing business when you do work without permits.
Have you seen the engineer's letter?
I didn't see the letter. I met the engineer and we went over his print. And we both were perplexed.
Okay. Well, he's not perplexed.
You should read his letter and tell us why he's wrong.
Yeah.
I just explained to you though...
Read the letter. Read the letter.
Read the letter and then tell us where he's wrong.
Our decision has to be made on his professional input, okay? His letter doesn't support much of what you're saying. In order to recommend...
Is there sufficient grade to get, I see the existing inlet's on the corner on the left side of the building?
Let him read the letter.
Is there sufficient grade from the back of the lot? Does that inlet? Is it possible that just a very simple pipe could be added, push some of the water to the inlet?
Something needs to be done on their property.
Yeah, regardless of the engineer, this guy's living it. I mean, you know, I doubt he's taking the time to express the you-know-what on earth that he's experiencing.
I agree with you.
So if he's negatively impacted, again, I go back to the, you know, I go back to the fact that this applicant has been doing all kinds of work with no permits, and this is the consequences of that.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, my confidence, honestly... Yeah, I mean, my evidence, honestly, they're peeled, they're flaked, and the water comes in through the window. I'm lucky because we knew about it, I paid more money for the sheet rock to take water. Okay, I put in special floors because we know it's a problem. And it's not one window, it's multiple windows.
When did you do that work?
Excuse me?
When did you do that work?
I've done that work from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty.
So since the start?
I've, I've mitigated seven different times to try to solve the issue. And it, it's not working. What I could do on my property is not work.
When's the last time you had water?
Well, I, I think we're down to the solution of either the applicant's, here's what he has to say and will agree to do it, or you're gonna eliminate your variances. Wait a minute, he's, that's a question to the applicant, not to you.
Could you put a French drain in so that this would hopefully alleviate it and appease your neighbor? So a French drain is like putting stone in, a pathway so the water follows the stone and goes to where you want it to go. You know, it seems like you've done work, as, as Ms. Schneider did, has pointed out, you've done work without permits or whatever. Maybe it is a good compromise for you to invest a few more dollars and put in a French drain.
Where's the French drain gonna send the water?
Well, that, that an engineer is the kind of-
You're gonna start basically where the end of the patio is to the front of your house. And your, your neighbor is saying that's where the ponding is taking place. And if we put the drain there, out to the street, because you, you've got a drain up by the back corner, and you've got a drain out in the back by, in front of the shed. Now you'll have another one picking up that puddle that's supposedly there and out to the street. Now, the issue of dumping it in the street and it gets clogged up, you know, you're both young guys, get a shovel.
Well, let me offer that, we don't have the inverse of the existing inlets that are on the, uh, street on the, on the edge of the, uh-
You've got the one down in the corner.
Right, there's, there's two, there's one, one on each road basically in the corner. If, I don't know the depth, is, if it's possible to tie into that so it avoids some of the icing issues, that would be my suggestion.
Could I suggest what really truly needs to get done and mitigating? Is one to tie the drain into, there's two storm drains.
Right.
If you tie it into a storm drain, no snow is gonna flood it, flood it. It's gonna be a positive flow. Case closed. This existing drain does not work. The numbers don't lie, what, what's on here does not work. There needs to be some sort of a drain system. I put in a swale, recut it twice, they put the dirt back. There's nothing more I could do. They need to put in a drain system separately from the roofing gutters, because that's one, that only exacerbates the system. But they need to tie in a separate system, a French drain. Because you diverted all your water, you made the grate even higher, and you pushed it to my house.
Sir, did, when the town engineer was there, did you address this issue?
I showed it to him, he was perplexed, and you wanna know what he told me? Somebody can get in trouble without putting misinformation on the survey.
Right.
If you could just alleviate a concrete patio.
Yet he didn't write any of this in his letter?
But it's not on the survey either.
I'll be honest with you.
That was provided by the applicant.
If you want to put in where I paid a prominent engineer firm, we confirm the numbers and the grades with what's on the sewer and the roads, these numbers don't jive.
But you don't have that in writing, you don't have a report.
No.
I just received this report today.
The, the report from the engineering firm you retained? This prominent engineering firm?
I have the grades what were shot from prior applications.
Just listen to the question, please listen to the question.
You're saying you have an engineering firm that agrees with you, but you don't have any report from them to share with us confirming your testimony?
Excuse me, maybe I explained that improperly? I have prior engineering prints to my property, to the township roads, to township storm drains, and to two lots that basically encompass the water drainage, you know, what the township has set up there.
Does the survey list the depth of the existing inlets?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear-
We know how deep the existing inlets are.
Um-
For the street.
For what I put in in the township, yes. For what he has, they show the top of the grate.
But I'm saying, how deep is it based on your info?
The difference?
No, 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 your info.
Based on your info, do you know how deep those in, existing inlets are in the street?
Um, they're four and a half feet.
So you have, you have some room to work with if you can send the, the water, keep it underground.
Correct. There, there is room to do something. And, you know, unfortunately, what was put in, designed, that the water was supposed to go from Harrison Road to the back into the storm drains. That's how the grate laid naturally. That's what was set up, that's what I graded, that's what was approved. Because I was not able to build until the foundation was done, the grading was done, the water was taken care of, the piping, everything was finished. I couldn't put a stick on my house until everything was approved with the engineer. There was no problem.
But I think we have a compromise, don't we?
And then, then all of a sudden after everything built, that's why I had them up.
Okay, now you're saying everything was supposed to go to the backyard, now you're wanting him to take it to the front, to the Harrison, right? That you believe if he puts this drain in there with a French drain, and take it out to Harrison, that'll mitigate your problems, is that what you're saying?
If you put it on any ground, yes. And you get pitch on it, yes, to take it out.
Okay, that would be my question for the applicant. Would you, um, be willing to just tie into the inlet and just not send it to the shallow, uh, curb, uh, off the exit of the street? Send it to the actual inlet? It's on the street.
Do you have to get a permit from the town to go in there?
You have to work with the engineer to allow you to do that, because it's their inlet.
I mean, do we really need their permission? I mean, it's, this is the cost of doing business without a permit. I, I don't understand this, I, you know? We gotta mitigate, we gotta rectify this.
So, so Chaz, how do I write that into the resolution number?
Right.
I'm at a loss.
It's really just extend the underground piping system to the existing inlet, and existing inlet, we don't care which one.
Peter?
As long as it's underground.
Can we not approve it until the work is done?
We can approve it subsequent, subject to the, the work being done.
Okay. So do it that way?
We'll do it that way.
If the applicant is willing to do that.
Okay, ask him.
Okay.
Okay. So then, the, the resolution is gonna require you to take the two foot of, um, pavers from the back vinyl fence and around to the shed, correct? And then there's gonna be an inlet, you're gonna hook the inlets into the, um, I guess the drainage system out in the road.
Inlet at the corner of the street.
Let me ask one question on that. What if, what if he can't get approval to do that from the township?
Because I have like-
Yeah, if that's-
Yeah, then, then he doesn't give the variance.
Monitored by the township?
They have to get a permit to tie in the inlet anyway.